Okay, we are reconvening Legislative Session 2018-08 for April 17, 2018. This is the ongoing open work session. The item that we are first addressing is House Bill 16, the Near Completers in Maryland College Promiscuous Scholarships. Mr. Troy, did you want to give us a breakdown of exactly what the purpose is here?
Okay, so this is on the agenda for council to decide whether or not we should send a letter of support to the governor. Dr. Hoy has sent an email encouraging us to do that, and it's my understanding that the executive branch intends to send a letter of support as well.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on this? Everyone in favor of it?
Yep.
Yes? We're good?
It's free, isn't it?
Yeah.
Free? The taxpayers gotta pay.
All right.
Where'd that money come from?
Any further discussion? Anybody have any more discussion? Ernie?
Yeah.
Joe? Larry? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
John? You're in favor?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the [inaudible] Education.
We're five minutes early.
Five minutes early. We don't have everybody here yet.
It's on our way.
She'll hear once.
Is there another one of those grand entrances that we?
No.
No. Big guns in. I'm just kidding.
Maybe she's not eating.
Yes.
Ready to go now that everybody's here?
We're ready.
All right.
We put together a little agenda that would help us guide through process. So I'm gonna pass this out.
Thank you.
I think Hamlin's coming forward. Hopefully that's addressed all the issues that [inaudible] to us.
He's still recovering surgery.
Thank you all for your [inaudible].
He's home.
Okay.
What'll we do is, we appreciate the list that you've presented.
I have no problem just starting with that and going through it. Very concise.
Well, it consists of the items that you forwarded to us, really. Actually, we didn't add anything to it. Those are your items. Excuse me. The first item has to do with safety in the schools, which we've talked about the previous time we visited with the council. Specifically, I think you had some questions about the Maryland Safe to Learn Act of 2018.
And Mrs. Miles, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services, is with
us. I will tell you generally that there isn't anything in the act that took us by surprise. I think we're in really good shape. I'm gonna ask that Mrs. Miles go through those items with you, and then I'll just add anything when she's finished.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As Dr. Hamlin referenced, we are very confident and comfortable in what is in the new regulation. Apologize for my back. Taking you through a few of the highlights from a summary. One of the parts that stands out to most people is the requirement of an SRO, or appropriate law enforcement coverage for every school. As you know, we have SROs in our middle and high schools. We have for a number of years. And as well, we have been in compliance with this even before there was a regulation to be in compliance, because all of our schools, elementary, starting with our Early Learning Center, all the way through to our evening high school, have assigned SROs for times outside of and during the school day. So, for example, the SRO for Wycomico Middle School may also be assigned, and I may get some of the assignments wrong, so I'm just speaking in generalities, but may also be assigned to East Salisbury and/or Beaver Run. So there's an immediate point of contact should there ever arise the need for such. We've actually had this in place with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office for the past number of years. I won't insert a number to be false with that, but I would say at least the past six to seven years. So probably predating that, but I may not have knowledge prior to that. Another requirement within the regulation is that it focuses on professional development for the SROs. I am very proud to sit before you and say something that I've said in the past, which is, we were actually one of three pilot systems, with the Maryland Center for School Safety as a lead agent, working with a curriculum developed by the Department of Justice, developed and supported by the Department of Justice. Two summers ago, all of our SROs trained with all of our secondary administrators. And again, we were one of three pilot counties. We were actually the first pilot county accepted. So we have had a good stronghold in that. We've actually been a part of the group that looks at that curriculum. And all of our SROs are currently, and moving forward, will continue to be trained in this curriculum. And when I say curriculum, the focus is on adolescent mental health, the development of the adolescent brain, working with a community school, and working with community agencies. So really, it focuses on knowing with whom we're working, and having our administrators work side by side with our SROs, so that we're all learning along the same lines. So it's been very beneficial with that regard. Also, there's a requirement that by 2019, all of our schools, all the schools in the state of Maryland, will have a safety audit completed. I'm pleased to sit before you and say we already have that process started. We anticipate possibly having all of those done by September of 2018. We have a team that includes law enforcement officers, our own Safe Schools Coordinator, persons from our own Facilities Department, some of whom have background in safety and security, as well as what they currently do. They will be working together, and our Risk Management Coordinator, they will be working together on these onsite audits. We are working under the guidance of the Maryland Center for School Safety. That is a limited in scope staff, two persons for the Maryland Center for School Safety, though I think it will be expanding. And they have provided what they have used in audits in the past, and that is what our team will be using as we move forward. Our process will include the involvement of an expanded group once the actual physical audits are completed. And then we'll be looking at our areas of need, our areas of stronghold, and looking to move forward in terms of what additionally we could do to further enhance the safety of our school environments. There is also a reference in here to a school safety coordinator. We do currently and have in the past, we continue to have that position. Mr. Andrew Turner serves as our Coordinator for Safe Schools and works in direct partnership with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office for anything that involves the safety of our students and our staff, as well as we have implemented this year a threat assessment, risk-threat assessment process, which is noted in the legislation as a requirement moving forward. So again, you have a lot to look to Wycomico County in terms of what we're doing. Obviously, we will continue to grow. We will continue to expand what we already have in place, and we will always keep the safety of our students and our staff and our schools and our community at the forefront. But we feel like we're on a very strong standing in terms of moving forward, and will continue to do so.
Okay. No questions? Go ahead.
You have a training program for students also, as far as threat assessments go?
Threat assessments, by the term that is referenced in the legislation, refers to evaluating a threat that is made, evaluating the person making that threat to determine if his, almost a leveling of serious threat, impending threat, false, things of that nature. So we have a team that works in that evaluation process, and based on that determination, it then moves on to our mental health professionals, including our school psychologists. Students are not persons who conduct threat assessments. That is conducted by law enforcement, Coordinator for Safe Schools, and our mental health staff.
I'm thinking more of the student safety type of things.
Well, we have that as well. We have a requirement for a particular number of drills, to particular types of drills. This is actually required by the Maryland State Department of Education, and all of our schools have to complete these on an annual basis. As well, we work with our SROs and expanded law enforcement in this area for what are called tabletop drills. Traditionally, that would be a staff sitting together and looking at something. We are expanding that. It is much broader now, much more detailed, as well as working on plans for larger-scale drills as the future meets us.
Your SROs are allowed to carry guns now, or guns are mandatory?
Our SROs have always been fully uniformed in accordance with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office uniform detail.
I don't understand the answer.
That means that yes, they do, and they always have. They do and they have.
Is that some of them can, some of them can't?
No, all of the SROs work under the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office guideline and always have their weapons.
Oh, my God.
I'm glad that that wasn't known, because that means that it's not something that is used.
Not so much RSO related, but are you meeting with, I think President Ashanti was in public hearing today, and she was talking about how they were gonna have a meeting in reference to the DOJ. Are you gonna be at that meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, I was wondering.
Talk with President Ashanti on a regular basis, so yes.
Yeah. Larry?
Yes, I've had the opportunity to get to know many of the deputies, the SROs, for the last at least seven years, since my kids are in the school systems, system, but different schools.
Is that how you get a ride home?
That's how I get a ride home. But I would say that we've got some quality deputies. Their interaction with the students, the students that I've seen is wonderful. As you know, there was an article recently by Ricky Pilot talking about some of the police officers and deputies are coaching and doing a great job. So their interaction with the students in the schools is tremendous.
Our deputies remain as employees of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, but they are truly team members in Wycomico County Public Schools. And I don't say that in any trite manner. It is very true, they're very much a part of our students' and our staff's daily lives.
I witnessed that when I was at Parkside, when we were doing the presentation for Teacher of the Year. And the deputy was with that, forget his name, and I really, I'm just drawing a blank on that, but it was amazing.
Tom Long.
Yes. And he was like the big brother, like 20 kids, every kid that walked through.
He's a Parkside graduate.
Okay, yeah.
Graduated, my oldest son.
How's the boyfriend doing, and you know, and all that, keeping him in line and all that? I think it was amazing how these kids reacted to him, and they just loved it. Great relationship. Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. The Food Nutrition Services?
You had universal pre-K.
No?
You changed the order.
Follow Bruce.
Changed your order.
Follow what Bruce tells you.
I did. Okay. Am I running late? All right? Okay.
We sent it, you just did not check to your [inaudible].
I have.
You've been at meetings?
Yes, I have. So you wanted to know a little bit more about the Food Nutrition Services. Everyone may or may not know Eric Gosley, he's the Director of Food Services. You specifically, I think, were asking questions about the recent office in the Daily Times about our kitchen inspections. And I will tell you honestly that when, well, backing up a little bit more, the Daily Times raised some questions with us about our kitchens, and we answered those.
Yeah, sent a list of five questions, and we sent back our responses to the Daily Times, and then all of a sudden, the article was printed, presented as it was published. Had no idea from the questions that we were asked that that spin was gonna be placed on the article.
And it raised my level of concern. I don't know if you saw my letter to the editor. It's the first letter to the editor that I've written. I felt that strongly about it, that it needed to be addressed, and we needed to set the record straight. And I was really prompted to do that, not just for my own feelings, but the unsolicited communication that I had received from Lori Brewster, the head of the Health Department, who was equally concerned about the slant of the article in the paper. So not only was there my letter to the editor, which had some information in it from Lori, and some correction from me, but also, the Daily Times then came back and did a follow-up story by being in our schools with, Paul didn't come in, but with Mr. Butler, and just going to North Salisbury.
North Salisbury.
As a follow-up to what's happening in our schools. We believe, and in fact, there was a Maryland Association of Boards of Education, someone was in our kitchens, heard about this.
Yes, maybe an inspector.
An inspector, sorry, and said, "I don't know where that's coming from, because you could eat off the floors in your kitchens." So it was concerning, and hopefully, the community knows that we take great pride in the safety of our food preparation in our kitchen facilities and cleanliness. So I don't know that you had any specific questions. Eric is here, and we can try to answer them, but.
I had one. I guess, I read the article, and I've had a number of years in the food service business and dealing with the Health Department, and I know they always show up at lunchtime, unfortunately. But the one thing I had concern about was where they were talking about the cooler that wasn't keeping the proper temperature, and that it, you've been addressed about that, but it had never been fixed. And so why was it that taken care of, or why did they say it hadn't been fixed and had it, or what?
It had, it was on our radar to replace over the summer. It did get replaced over the summer, but it was replaced when the school year started back up.
But when they came back to do their next inspection, it hadn't been fixed?
We had replaced it with a different unit.
And the other unit wasn't working correctly either?
And that unit wasn't working correctly, though. Basically, what we do, what we did in this situation was, in the meantime, while we're getting the funds together to purchase the equipment, we had a spare piece of equipment that we had tested and worked fine in the shop, and then we put it into the unit. And it probably didn't keep up, because it was lunchtime, and they were opening it and closing it, and those type of things.
When you do your Food Nutrition Services, do you, I assume we've been doing it the same way for a number of years or forever. Is there ever an opportunity to look outside the box and try maybe contracting or subcontracting? Or, as we saw in an article, our television show, where the kids actually prepared the food, and which absolutely looked wonderful in different countries? And again, these are progressive things. But do we ever take those initiatives to do that ourselves?
Yes, we've actually looked at contracting that service. And it's a matter of evaluating priorities relative to contract versus in-house. And thus far, we've determined that based upon our analysis, that the staff that we have, and the resources that we are contributing, and continuing to reduce, our goal is to make our food service operation a hundred percent self-sufficient. So that's how we.
Yeah, I see where you've had employees that have been there 25, 30, 40 years.
That's correct.
That's good.
Of course. Okay. All right. Okay, next. I'm gonna ask Mr. Jesse Reed. He's the new Controller, taking my old position. I wanted to introduce him. Mr. Jesse Reed, CPA, MBA, been with the board for several years, worked his way up through the ranks, is now the Comptroller, like I said, in my previous position. So we're excited to have him in that position. And what we're gonna do now is address some of the questions that were raised by council members relative to various financial and statistical pieces of information. And what I want to do is, I want to take you to answer those responses, to take you to our website, because there's a plethora of information that's available, not only to the council, but to the public, right on our website. So we're gonna take you to our Transparency Portal, something that we rolled out about three years ago, a little, not quite three years ago. And we're gonna look and hopefully answer almost all the questions, if not all the questions, that were raised, right from information on Transparency Portal.
Is that available to the public?
Yes.
Yes, this is available to the public. This is a button right on the front of our webpage, and it takes you right to this. Transparency Portal, go back.
Oh, I got it.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, one of the first questions that were raised was about gift cards. And what Jesse's gonna do is, he's gonna take you to, right up at the top there, under Business Operations, under Procurement. And then, under Procurement, we're gonna go to Documents. And all our documents relative to our policies and procedure are on the web, on our webpage, and then under Policies, the Procurement Procedures. Back after the 2014 legislative audit, which you all remember, that we went through, the, one of the responses in the audit report had to do with gift cards. And so after that legislative audit, the board adopted new procedures relative to gift cards. And on page 11, within our Procurement Procedures, you'll see that the board adopted shortly after that release of that audit report in 2014. Paragraph 8A, "Gift cards or gift certificates cannot be purchased as a gift, award, or incentive for employees and appointed officials of the Wycomico County Board of Education." So no longer are general fund funds to be used to purchase gift cards for any employees or officials of the Board of Education.
You can't purchase them for students or non-employees?
Yes, gift cards or gift certificates can be purchased when used as rewards or incentives for students and non-employees. Only then, after the gift card validation document web form has been approved by the appropriate authorities. So that's the only time.
As you're on the portal, to go and show how many gift cards were purchased and who they were given to?
No, not that specific.
You can't do that.
No, not from the portable.
That's what I was asking for.
Okay. So you wanna know what, you wanna know.
How many gift cards you gave.
For students.
And who got them, and why they were given.
For students, you're asking for, okay, well, they can't be bought for employees, so you're asking for the students.
It just doesn't say students.
Yeah, it just says students and non-employees.
It says students and non-employees.
Yes. So you wanna know how many were bought for students and non-employees?
Learn about our using gift cards for students, for students and non-employees?
It says non-employees, Ms. Hamlin. It doesn't say just students. It says for students and non-employees for school fundraisers. I'd like to know the total. I mean, I've given complaints.
All right.
You know, about gift cards being.
We'll get that total for you.
And, you know, when I asked for this before, a few years ago, everybody said, "Well, it's too much trouble to tell me," until one of your board members happened to say, "Oh, all we have to do is hit a button," and it was that easy. And so.
Yeah, we'll definitely get it for you. We didn't, we thought it was only relative to employees that you were asking. All right.
Is there a cap or maximum per card?
Yes, $100 is the maximum that is allowed. No more than $100. Okay, the next question, relative to training meetings and conferences, was raised. So again, a lot of this information is on our Transparency Portal. If you go down under Transparency Portal and go to our monthly financial reports, we post monthly financial reports on our Transparency Portal. It's just churning. There you go. All right, we have summary transactions. So if you pull up, for example, the month of March, and you look under each category, as you know, there's 15 categories that we must report to the state. First category is Administration, and Training, Meetings and Conferences are under the Object Code, Other Charges, which I think is on the next page there. You'll see Training, Meetings and Conferences. So this just gives you an idea in summary form what the total is for Administration. There's a budget that was approved of $53,000 for Training, Meetings and Conferences for Admin. The current working budget's $50,780. The current month expenditures, $2,200, and then year-to-date, $28,000. Now, Jesse, let's go to the Detail Report. And then, in the Detail Report for Transact, and scroll down before you do that, I'm sorry. I wanted to see, wanted the council to see how many years we have on there. So we have, when we first went live back in 2015, up through the current year, 2018, of all of our transactions. So if we look at March in 2018, and let's download this to a PDF, or no, you can do it right from there. You can find, hit Put Training, and you're gonna be able to, did you put Training? Yeah, there you go, hit Next. Okay, each transaction, you can find by the date that the transaction happened, what department in this case, for March the 2nd, Management Information Services had a Training, Meetings and Conference session. M&amp;T tells me that it was a procurement card that was used, and it was for $151.20. So go to the next one, Jesse. And then, hit the Next button. Next page? Yeah, hit the, see up to the next, where you got it. There you go. All right, the next one, March the 8th, Business Support Services, Training. This is Employee Reimbursement for $4.98. So from this webpage, you can see every transaction by date and what department it was. And there's thousands. No.
No, it doesn't tell what it's for.
No.
It's under category.
Right, under the category.
It's not a category, but it doesn't tell what the reimbursement was for.
Well, it tells you whether it was a mileage, employee reimbursement, or who it was to.
A conference.
Yes.
Or meals or whatever.
Right, right. And to summarize, in case you were, the council was interested in this, in 2016, we spent $271,71 on Training, Meetings and Conferences. In FY17, we spent $284,035. And year-to-date, we've spent $222,947 for Training. And to give you some perspective, that represents 0.15% of our total budget. And typically, if you look at industry averages, companies spend between 1% to 2% on Training and Meetings and Conferences. So we're well below, well below that, as you can see.
Bruce, that is all of the training, not specifically.
That's all the training.
Meals and travel. So meals and travel would be a fraction of that.
You know, I know you have some heartburn with me asking these questions, but when I talk to teachers, and teachers say, you know, they're talking about salaries and subventions, and say, "Well, why don't you ask about all the gift cards they're giving out, or some of the meals they're having out?" You know, so that's why I'm asking, I'm hearing from your employees.
Well, this information is available.
Well, it wasn't, no, it really wasn't. I mean, it's not really available. I mean, it's there, but it doesn't say exactly what it's for, as with the gift cards. It didn't say, you know, who got them, and how many each person got. I mean, we, you've seen enough examples on the other side of the bay where gift cards have been abused, and I hope that's not happening with the School of Education.
No, it is not. It is not happening. Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, a couple more, relative to financial statistical information questions that were raised. [inaudible]
No, it doesn't tell what it's for.
No.
It's under category.
Right, under the category.
It's not a category, but it doesn't tell what the reimbursement was for.
Well, it tells you whether it was a mileage, employee reimbursement, or who it was to.
Or conference.
Yes.
Or meals or whatever.
Right, right. And to summarize, in case you were, the council was interested in this, in 2016, we spent $271,71 on Training Meetings and Conferences. In FY17, we spent $284,035. And year-to-date, we've spent $222,947 for training. And to give you some perspective, that represents .15% of our total budget. And typically, if you look at industry averages, companies spend between 1% to 2% on Training and Meetings and Conferences. So, we're well below, well below that, as you can see.
Bruce, that is all of the training, not specifically-
That's all the training.
Meals and travel. So, meals and travel would be a fraction of that.
You know, I know you have some heartburn with me asking these questions, but when I talk to teachers and teachers say, you know, they're talking about salaries and such. And they say, "Well, why don't you ask about all the gift cards they're giving out, or some of the meals they're having out?" You know, so, that's why I'm asking, I'm hearing, I'm hearing from your employees.
Well, this information is available.
Well, it wasn't, no, it really wasn't. I mean, it's not really available. I mean, it's there, but it doesn't say exactly what it's for. As with the gift cards, it didn't say, you know, who got them and how many each person got. I mean, we've, you've seen enough examples on the other side of the bay where gift cards have been abused. And I hope that's not happening in the School of Education.
No, it is not. It is not happening. Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, a couple more relative to financial statistical information questions that were raised. There was a question raised by one of the council members relative to revenue and our sources of revenue by type. That was one of the questions. So, again, using our transparency portal as our kickoff place, we have Selected Financial Statistics that takes us to the MSD website. And under Selected Financial Data, there is a report called Selected Financial Data, Maryland Public Schools for the 10 Years of, that ends in 2016. Jesse, didn't you find out that 2017's soon going to be posted?
Yes, sir, this week.
Okay, so, 2017 will be available soon. So, if you look at Table 2 within this publication. Table 2 shows the revenue by school system for the 10-year period FY7 through FY2016. And it, and it's in thousands of dollars. So, if you look at FY7, Wycomico's total revenue. If you'd blow that up one more time for me, Jesse. Go down to Wycomico. There's $160, I think that says $583 or $683. $160 million, that's the total revenue from all sources for current expenses. That would include state, local, and federal dollars for current expenses. And then, all the way to 16, you can see it's over $202 million. And then, it gives you a one-year increase and then a 10-year increase. And then, on the succeeding three tables. Table 3, 4, and 5 give the component parts of that total revenue. Table 3 gives you the total state component. So, again, looking at Wycomico County, you can see from FY7, scroll down a little bit, Jesse, for me. There was total, state was $97 million. And in 2016 now, you can see total state is over $145 million. So, again, state aid has grown increasingly. And again, you'll recall, that says the Thornton, Thornton funding from the state. The next table shows you the local appropriation. And again, this line, share of this is the actual county appropriation to education. And again, in 2007, Wycomico contributed $48 million. And in 2016, they contribute $43 million. I think that's four, is that 41?
41.
41 million. So, you can see there's been a decrease in the amount of county appropriation for education over that 10-year period of time. The large, the largest point in terms of total local revenue was in fiscal year 2010, where it reached a little over $50 million. And then, we had the recession hit, and we experienced those major reductions in county aid for public education in, God bless you, in fiscal year 11 and fiscal year 12. So, again, in 16, it was 41,307. And again, it shows you by, by county. And then, finally, Table 5 shows you the federal aid by county, again, for that same 10-year period. Actually, federal aid has not, not grown that significantly over that period of time. $14 million for Wycomico versus, I think that says-
$18 million.
$18 million. All right. Were there any questions about revenue sources and types specifically, other than what that could answer? All right, and then, the last one had to do-
I got one.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, the total for all four or five sources is $148 million?
$202 million for all sources.
You know how much we get out of Wycomico County after we get your portion? About $52 million.
$52 million, yep. Yep.
Can you lend us some?
Well, again, remember, education is a-
Core need.
Is a people, person, business.
Core service, right.
Yep. Okay. Finally, the last question that was asked relative to financial matters had to do with cost per pupil. Again, going back to Maryland Selected Financial Statistics from the webpage. Table 15 from that same publication shows the cost per pupil for that 10-year period of time, FY7 through FY2016. And for Wycomico County in '07, it was $10,609. Now, it's $13,320. Jesse, if you'll slide over just to the right a tad. And again, it shows the one-year growth in the cost per pupil. And again, cost per pupil takes in the total expenditures for federal, state, and local dollars, divides it by the full-time equivalent enrollment to come up with the costs or expenditures per pupil. And you can see, over that period of time, the growth for Wycomico was a little over 25.5% over that 10-year period. Our sister counties, Somerset and Worcester, were 31 and 32, to give you some kind of a comparison.
We've had a conversation before where I think that it should be considered the capital expenses, commitment on the county's part, the capital expenses. Because that adds probably 20 to 25%, I think, to the total cost. It depends on the year and the investment and how, what we've had.
Right.
But probably, if you took what the numbers were currently, I think you might find, you may already have it, knowing you have it.
Yes, yes. Matter of fact, I'll share a copy with you. Thought maybe you may ask that, sir.
Okay, good.
Am I right? Is it? Well, actually, what, what, we got, we got copies. We've got copies, sir, every one. Let you take one and pass it down.
Bruce, in the last, what, 10 years, we've built three new schools. We're getting ready to finish the third one, right?
Yes.
Major renovations, two. French Street and North Salisbury.
Yes.
Has any other counties done the same thing?
Oh, oh, yes, many, many have. But, but, but a good way, do we have an extra one of those or another? Because I'm with Mr. Cannon. I have one. He likes not to give this up. The, the best way to measure, as is, in my mind, anyway, the best way to measure a county's contribution toward capital for a school system, because the county does this as part of their budget presentation, is to show what is their debt service, that's specifically for school construction. And so, we went back and we looked at what the debt service, right out of the county's budget, what is the total amount, and what is the percent of that to the county's total budget? So, in 2008, as you can see, the total PNI payment, or debt service requirement for school construction, was $7,465,163. That was 5.66% of the total. And then, it got as high as 10.3% of the county's total budget in 2012. Actually, the year that we saw a sizable reduction in our operating budget. Remember, we lost $7 million in one year and $7.5 million in another year in terms of operating budget. But in '12, that happened to be the year that they increased the total for debt service for construction to 10.3% of their budget, or $11.1 or $11.2 million. And then, now, in 2018, their current year, the total debt service, PNI payment for school construction is $11.6 million, or represents 8.12%. So, it's been about, over that period of time, it's been hovering around between 6 and got as high as 10, and then around, around 8%. So, it's kind of been, you know-
8% of the operating budget.
Of your, of your total budget.
Right. I guess my question is, how does that $11.6 reflect in the cost per student? I believe that may be a larger number if you break that down and include that in the total cost per student.
Right, right.
It's even, it's even greater than that.
Oh, yeah, it would be. But if you, again, trying to compare apples to apples, you would have to factor that same thing in with the other counties.
Understood.
In order to be able to do that. And we don't have access to that number from the other counties. And there's no publication that we can find that gives that information.
Right. I just, we've had a really great track record, Wycomico County, of putting some really great new schools out there over the last few years.
Yes, and we appreciate that and hope that continues, yes.
And I hate to see that overlooked.
Yeah, no, nope.
Nope. But I really like this, thank you.
Oh, you're quite welcome. We try to stay a step ahead, sir. That's our, that's our, that's our goal. That's our goal. Okay, that was all of the specific financial and statistical information that we had. And I'm going to step aside and let Mr. Briggs step up.
And I believe that Mr. Briggs and, is Mr. Stoffer with you?
Yes.
Not only have Rick Briggs, who's the-
Thank you, Bruce.
Chief Academic Officer, but Micah Stoffer. Many of you may know Mr. Stoffer, who's the Director of Secondary Education.
Good afternoon.
And they are going to jointly answer your questions about graduation rate and college preparedness.
All right. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Before we talk about, specifically about that, we did want to emphasize or point out the change in our student demographic over the last several years. And so, what Mr. Reed has pulled up, and actually, let me back up a second so you can see how he got there. Again, we were from the transparency portal, right from our website, but the student population makeup is what's currently on the screen. And what that shows is our at-risk population has greatly increased since 2005. So, we're looking at a 13-year span there. Specifically, our ELL population has more than tripled. We have close to 1,000 ELL students in our district right now. Also, our foreign population was, that's our free and reduced meal students, based upon their economic family situation. And again, that's increased by more than 2,000. So, again, with that change in demographic, we're still able to highlight some things about our graduation rate. And again, I'll stay right on the portal and go to Maryland Report Card, where there's a vast amount of statistical data. I will point to one thing, because you guys asked about graduation rate. And so, we'll go to the four-year adjusted cohort, and Mr. Stoffer will be able to chime in here.
That's right. So, as Mr. Briggs was sharing, despite our changes in demographics over the last 10 to 13 years, we're excited to, to share that from 2011 to 2017, our graduation rate, the four-year adjusted cohort rate, which is the rate that Maryland uses with all of the counties in Maryland to determine that graduation rate, went from 78% in 2011 to almost 84% in 2017. Our dropout rate, which is indicative of the students that typically don't graduate, has gone from almost 17% in 2011 to around 10% in 2017.
But they raise, they raise the limit to 18, right?
This past year.
Just, just this past year, yes. That did not take into account during those six years, however. And that's important to understand, because the four-year adjusted cohort rate doesn't take into account students that may take longer than four years to graduate high school, which we do have a number of students that do graduate, sometimes through non-traditional methods after four years. Or it does not take into account students that are special needs students and may be certificate of completion students and not diploma-earning students as well. So, I think that, that dropout rate decrease from 17% to 10% really is indicative of what we're able to, what we're doing in Wycomico County. Again, despite the change in demographics that Mr. Briggs had shared earlier. And then, if we're looking at college readiness, which was another question that was asked. The SAT changed a couple of years ago to be more aligned with Common Core and what the standards were as it relates to that. And if we look at 2016 SAT results and 2017 SAT results, we went from an aggregate score of 956 to 961. And when we look at that also, we are higher than the national average and also slightly higher than the Maryland average. And then, also, looking at our AP data, which is our Advanced Placement Courses that we have in all four of our high schools. In 2008, we had approximately 361 students that were taking at least one or more AP courses. And this past year, we had 583. That translates, going through, in 2008, we had a mean average of a 2.6 on the AP exam. And now, this past year, 2.7. Both in 2008, all the way through and now, until now, 2017, about 51% of our students that take an AP exam are scoring higher, three or higher. And the total number of exams that we've given has increased from 578 exams in 2008 to almost 1,000 exams in 2017.
And that three or higher, that's important to recognize, especially from a parent's standpoint for their pocketbook, because by scoring a three or higher on the AP exam, most, most colleges and universities accept college credit for those courses. So, by passing, by passing the test with a score of three or more, that's one less college course that the parents will need to be paying for in the future.
And also, in the state of Maryland, that's a good indicator of if students are ready for college, college readiness. Another point that, that we wanted to make, that, that kind of relates to college and career readiness and what we do to prepare. We know that our students are being prepared by the amount of scholarship money that they are earning. In 2015, we had over $10 million in scholarship monies awarded to our seniors. This past year, that went up to $16.5 million in scholarship monies that our students were being awarded. So, all indicators of the amount of preparation and the amount of work that's going in behind the scenes to prepare our students to be college-ready. And also, one thing that we wanted to make sure that we mentioned is there, there's another piece to that, and that's career readiness. And something that we hold to be very important in Wycomico County because of our outstanding Parkside Career and Technology Education Center. And we are expanding that and have been continuing to expand that by offering more programs in recent years that are in the technology field. Those programs are things such as Project Lead the Way, pre-engineering, business, computer science. And now, next year, we'll be adding interactive media as well, to, again, not only prepare our students for a career, but really, you know, their goals in post-secondary education.
You've got some programs too, right?
We did include our plumbing program. We did phase that in with our HVAC program. So, while we're still teaching the skills, that's important in our plumbing program. We have combined that with our HVAC program, just to ensure, again, that we're being prudent with, with the money that's, you know, allotted for our CTE programs. And we were trending that plumbing was, you know, low enrollment for a number of years.
Was there any other cut, any other programs cut?
No.
And you've had state medalists, just one, correct?
Absolutely. We, we have state medalists and national winners every year in Skills USA competitions, which is a direct result of the outstanding program that we can offer. More than 20 programs that we do offer, as well as the instructors in those programs and what they're able to do with our students.
Yeah, we get to meet them one-on-one at the World Museum. I believe it was at Chamber.
It's a Chamber.
Yes.
It was great, yeah. And it was really interesting to hear what they, you had these graduates handing out business cards for HVAC work.
Yep.
And just-
In terms of college readiness, so, one of the, you know, we've talked about Warwick a lot, you know, in the recent years. And was it roughly 70% of the students that go into Warwick are deemed not college-ready? And I think a lot of those- And I think a lot of those, I mean, not all, but a lot come from Wycomico County High School. So they graduate school and either they, you know, they either directly go into Warwick or maybe they wait a few years. But the education that they've received at the schools and received on graduation, I mean, doesn't, you know, for whatever reason, they're not deemed college-ready to go into Warwick. And there, there seems to be a very big disconnect. And it's not, not just Wycomico. If you look around at every other school system and, and every other community college has this sort of numbers. But, you know, that, you know, I, I'm not sure, that's a big disconnect when we're graduating students that then go to Warwick and say, no, you're not ready to come here. And they have to take remedial classes at Warwick. So what, what is being done to address that sort of thing?
No, that's a great question. One thing to note is that the standards that Warwick is using is, is apart from the standards that, you know, Maryland State dictates that we present to all of our students in high school. And Warwick determines that through what they call an Accuplacer assessment, which puts students at a, a certain level when they're testing to go and entry, you know, enter into Warwick. One thing that we have also done is to address that, and, you know, with your question, is we are looking at how important dual enrollment is with our students at the high school level. And over the course of the last five years, we have expanded that greatly. In fact, currently, we have two hundred and thirty students that are enrolled at Warwick while still being enrolled at high school, taking over four hundred courses at Warwick. And our hope is that by their experience at, you know, off-campus at a college level and in that, in that curriculum, that they're gonna be more successful. We've also looked at expanding dual enrollment and college opportunities through something that we're calling Early College, where students will take classes during the ninth and tenth grade year at their home high school, but then transfer to Warwick during their junior and senior years. So they'll be taking courses at Warwick that can be put on the high school transcript. And the courses that they're taking during their ninth and tenth grade year can be articulated into the credit-bearing program that Warwick offers. So by the end of the four years, they'll graduate with a high school diploma and an Associate of Arts degree as well.
Yeah, and I, I think those are all very positive steps. I guess my, you know, my concern is, you know, we, you know, I've kind of gotten on Warwick a little bit. You know, the, their completion rate's not very high. But, you know, again, that's not necessarily all up to Warwick. I mean, it, it's some of the students that, that come into school just aren't ready for it. And it, it seems to me that if the standards are not aligned, I mean, they could be getting a high school diploma. And if they're not ready to go to Warwick, that may indicate that maybe they're not, you know, I mean, you know, that's showing up elsewhere too. Maybe they're not ready for a job, or maybe they're not ready, you know, if they go to other colleges. And so, you know, I, you know, it's the high school diploma that they're getting. I mean, graduation rates are good. But if that means that they got a high school diploma, but when they get into college, they're not ready for that, that seems like, you know, high school diploma may not mean, you know, the gradua-, high graduation rate may not mean anything if that skill doesn't translate to being ready to take classes at Warwick or take classes at SU. So that, I don't know how you fix that, but that, that to me seems like a big problem, that we have graduates that community college says, no, you need to take remedial classes as soon as you get into a community college. That, that shouldn't be happening.
So I'm gonna make a comment about this that is not a reflection at all on Warwick, because I haven't studied this issue here. I can only tell you about a previous experience that I've had. And that is a very, when you said it's not just Wycomico, I was really pleased to hear you say that because it is happening in other areas. And it does have everything to do with the assessment that the community college is using to determine whether they are ready. And then, what I have found has happened in other areas, and again, not necessarily here, is that students then are enrolled in remedial courses and never assessed again, but pronounced well, that they're now ready to go into college-level courses. So it's definitely an area I want to talk with Micah and Rick about as we move forward to see what's really happening here. But to me, it's a lot about communication between the community college and the public school system about what those standards, the alignment of those standards and what does it mean to be ready for Warwick.
Yeah, I mean, and that, you know, there may be that, but it does seem to be, if you look at those students that are assessed as not, you know, college-ready, that does seem to indicate, you know, that they do have more problems persisting through community college. I mean, it's not just a, you know, a misalignment of standards. You know, it seems that when they are assessed at community college, that indicates that, you know, there is an issue going forward. And so it seems that their assessment at, at community college is telling them something that is useful in terms of, you know, what it takes to persist. So.
I would hope so. I've not seen that everywhere.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, that, that does seem to be the standard, you know, when you look at, you know, kind of Maryland, you know, community college data, the students that get remedial help tend to do better. Those that are assessed not ready, that don't get that help, tend to do a lot worse. And so it seems that that assessment does tell you something. And so if that assessment is telling you something and they still have high school diplomas, it seems the problem may be with the high school diploma and not with the assessment. I mean, that's just.
The other thing that I will point out, and I'm really, really pleased that our graduation rate is coming up to close to eighty-four percent. We are the second lowest in the state. I'm not happy with eighty-four percent. So we have a lot of room to grow.
And I would also say, college and career readiness is something that we are looking at very closely in our high schools and also really throughout our, our pre-K through twelve continuum to make sure that what we're doing is aligned from one grade level to, to the next. And also, more importantly, as you pointed out, that where our students are ending with us, they're in a good place and a good opportunity to start where, where they'll be beginning post-secondary education as well. So it used to be, you know, a number of years ago, the end goal was to make sure that we got as many students across the stage as possible. And now I would say that our focus has really turned to not only making sure that we graduate students, but that they're prepared to go on into the area of choice that they want to be. And I think one of the, the areas that I had mentioned earlier, programs like Advanced Placement, getting more students exposed to those kinds of courses and that, those kinds of curricula are very important in preparing them for the rigors that they're gonna face once they do graduate.
As much as I'd like to see everyone go to college, college is not for everyone, is correct?
That's correct.
So the career readiness is an important factor. So I applaud the schools for doing that. Can you go back to the, the chart with the farm on it?
Yep.
The makeup?
Sure.
What percent of that, oh, you don't have it up.
I guess. There you go.
What percent of that is the actual farm, pre-reduced meals?
Sixty-one percent now.
About sixty-one percent? So it's up there pretty high. With numbers like that, it's a wonder that this county can afford anything.
Is it budget college?
Yes. Wasn't sure what you were really looking for here, knowing that you did get, I guess, the county exec's budget this morning. But I will just tell you that we, our budget preparation was a little different this year. We looked at what our three strategic priorities were, and I think you've heard me say them before, but I'll say them again. They're the implementation of universal pre-K, which is really with the goal in mind of making sure that students are reading on grade level by grade three. There's a lot of research behind that, as, as I've probably spoken to before. But getting that early start is so critically important. And so in that area of the budget, very specifically, we were asking for one-point-three, almost one-point-four million dollars for Phase One of universal pre-kindergarten. And that was specifically eleven classrooms where we currently have space. The second strategic priority is increasing the percentage of students who graduate. We need to continue to work on that. Those initiatives or those budget requests in that part of the budget are varied, but they're all very focused on increasing our graduation rate. And then finally, the, and that's three, two-point-three, just over two-point-three million dollars. And then the third area is to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce, which is just over three-point-six million dollars. And that basically is just to carry out our bargaining agreements. We do have bargaining agreements with all three bargaining units, tentatively pending budget, obviously, and healthcare. So those are the highlights. We also ask for one-time funding. Two major areas. One also has to do with the implementation of universal pre-K, which is looking ahead to Phase Two, knowing we don't have space to fully implement universal pre-K. We're looking at two ten-classroom modular buildings on our current property. And that was one area, help me with that.
Three-point-two million.
Thank you, three-point-two million. And then some additional technology requests that were also in the one-time funding requests.
So long and short of it is, you're really looking for, and we've had this conversation before too, and I'm not, either way, you're looking for about ten, ten, ten and a half, a ten-and-a-half million dollar increase for the most part, right? The seven-point-three-three-seven, right?
That is.
No, that, that includes the state.
Yes.
So we're asking for a little over, little over five million for operating from the county.
Okay, that's.
Plus the one-time of three-point-nine.
Okay. I missed that somewhere.
Yeah.
So of the seven-point-three, it's five million from the county.
A little over five million.
Okay. And on the.
On the one times.
The three-point-two one-time and the seven-twenty-five one-time, is that all county?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
That's all county. So that's the three-point-two.
Yeah.
So the pre-K is about four and a half, four and a half total.
That's correct. For Phase One and Phase Two.
The one-point-three on pre-K, is that all county?
Yes.
Okay, so that is about.
We say it's all county. That's the total request. Remember, the total budget includes state and local dollars. How it all pans out in the end, it, you know.
All right.
But, but the total request is over seven million. We're getting about two-point-five additional state aid. The balance would have to come from the.
So it's about, so we're actually looking at five million above maintenance of effort? And then in addition to that, you're looking for another four million one-time.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. And the pre-K costs are at least, are, are in the range of three and a half to four million, I would guess.
For Phase One and start of Phase Two.
Phase Two. Is Phase Two comes into the same fiscal year?
No.
But we.
Go ahead.
Sorry. In order for us to be prepared to begin Phase Two in fall of nineteen, we need to, our facilities and planning department needs to have the funding to purchase those modulators in order to get them in place and open in the fall of nineteen. In this year's funding.
Okay.
I have a question. I think it's a relatively simple question. Is why does it take four years to evaluate a student where you're putting in one-point-three million dollars? And next year, you can't evaluate that student and find out whether any progress is being made? In other words, you're going to assess these students four years down the road based on this, this pre-K program. But if I gave you one-point-three million dollars, you should be able to tell me if that student's making any headway next year.
Of course. Yeah, we, we assess, we don't wait until. Is that what you're?
That's what I'm asking.
No, we assess.
You know, I remember asking the graduation rate five or six years ago and saying it was going to improve, but we couldn't look at it for ten years because we couldn't assess it for ten years. And.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You can't speak to that answer.
I know you can't speak to that. You weren't here. But, you know, it seems to me like if I put a lot of funding in, I want to know what kind of results we're getting the first year to see whether I should keep putting more money in.
Right.
It may have been the terminology, John, that they were using, third grade, what we say, third grade ready or something?
Third-day readiness. I understand readiness.
But I don't, because I understand, that's the first thing I thought when I read it.
We are assessing every year.
I understand. I would also.
Yes.
And is there a matrix? Or do we just say, well, it looks like you're doing pretty good?
What kind of matrix? Do you mean a rubric or a matrix?
Do you have, do you have a way of, of assessing on a planning basis, which is structured? It says, well, this kid grew one-point-seven percent this year or one-point-six?
Yes. We, we measure reading grade level multiple times during the year.
So we're testing pre-ken-, pre-kindergarten kids?
We're giving the kindergarten readiness assessment, yes. Yes, we are assessing.
Okay.
And right now, we, we, I just have one quick question. The universal pre-K, are, do we still have families that are paying for their children to attend the pre-K? I thought at one time that there were some families that had to pay.
No.
No. If they're, if they're attending public school, there is no tuition at all that need to be paid.
I know originally, pre-K I thought was for kids that were needy, families that were needy. And then there were some openings for families and they had to pay. Okay, so they never had to pay?
No.
I was thinking there was. Okay.
What roles Head Start playing right now as far as pre-K is concerned?
Well, we have a Head Start program, as you know, and that's, you can look at their readiness assessment data. When you look at all of kindergarten readiness assessment across Maryland and specifically in Wycomico, you can look at those data. I know that we are in communication with Head Start, especially where we assist them in providing services for our special needs students who are attending Head Start.
Okay. The, the total students they have, and with your preparation on these, the, the budget for pre-K, are you considering the universal pre-K, are you, are you referring to both three-year-olds and four-year-olds or just?
Four-year-olds.
This is just four-year-olds?
Right. We will continue, continue to operate our Judy Centers through grant funding.
Right.
Which is three-year-olds. But we're talking about four-year-olds.
Only forty students. There's only slots for forty three-year-olds through the Judy Center.
Okay. Okay. And, but now you, so that the six hundred students enrolled now.
Remember, many of those, about fifty percent of that are in a half-day program. We can only afford all for a half. No.
Okay. And you just had registration last week, I guess. And I guess you don't know the results of that yet, do you?
Any data on that?
Okay, and you have six hundred now, so is that five hundred and forty-one more or, because I know it's not that, you don't, they don't have to reregister, right? So that's, so, so are we up to like a thousand now?
Again, remember, that's just a small window of time. We'll, we'll continue to get registrants per month on end, all the way up to the day.
And that's pre-K and K. Pre-K and K.
Okay.
So you can't really just add the new number to the six hundred that you're.
That's what I was talking about. So, okay. Just curious.
Anything else about budget highlights?
Anybody else have any questions on budget?
Okay, I, I expect we'll be back when it's our budget session for specific questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We'll have, you know, we'll deserve a whole day for you.
A whole day. Got Jean's attention.
You had asked one, one additional question, at least according to our agenda. Apparently, Joan Smith came and spoke with the council about teacher turnover, and you had a question about the twenty percent. Twenty percent is a three-year cohort. It is over a course of three years. So it's about seven percent in any given year.
She spoke per year. It's, we look at a three-year cohort. Okay.
No, it's strictly teachers and administrators.
Teachers.
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 Unfortunately, the turnover rate with classified employees is higher than that.
The other thing that, and we talked about this, and we talked about it at length, is that, is just the teacher shortage. I was at a meeting, statewide meeting yesterday in Annapolis. It, it, it will continue. We are an import state. We are importing a large, significant portion of teachers' demand in our classrooms. And it's not getting any better. The state, in fact, is issuing several grants as part of the Kerwin Commission work that was done that will hopefully provide some additional incentives for locals to be able to offer students to enter the teaching profession. Something that currently is not happening, not only in Wycomico County, but statewide. Matter of fact, nationwide.
Did you have a question, Matt?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, you know, if any of your teachers were able to take advantage of the donorschoose.org giveaway? That happened last week. Did you guys see that? It was, Donors Choose is a website where teachers can go on and basically put a wish list for classroom supplies. Last week, one of the cryptocurrencies, Ripple, fully funded that, twenty-one million dollars. And so any teacher that had a wish list on there got fully funded, so.
They may have. I'm just not, not aware if they did.
I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Just want to, Dr., or Don Fitzgerald's out, you know, for some surgery, so I'm sitting in for him as vice president. Just would like to say, we appreciate the relationship we have with the council. And I'd like to commend Dr. Hanlon and her team. Always equate the Board of Ed and the public school system as like a giant boat. You can't turn it around quickly. You can't change directions on a.
quickly. You can't change directions on a dime. But Dr. Hanlon and her team are navigating some pretty tough waters, and we're making some directional changes for the good for our students, graduation rates, and her three priorities. You were with us, John, with the pre-K. I mean, the statistics are overwhelming. If we don't get them kindergarten-ready, by the time they're third, fourth, fifth grade, and they're not at that level, their chances of success in the world are pretty minimal. So Dr. Hanlon's got the right priorities for us. We appreciate your continued support, and I believe we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Great.
Now, I understand that, I'm going to guess that Mr. Fitzgerald is probably watching, because I think he really wanted to be here. But he is recovering well, and he got good news from his biopsy. And so he's hoping to return, I think, within a couple weeks. Well, I think he's being a little industrious about that, but we hope, we hope he's back with us soon.
Did he get that complimentary Botox with it and all that else?
You have to ask, yeah.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say that, I know you had your teacher year back, like, two years ago, or two weeks ago. I just think your teachers are outstanding. You're very fortunate. You've got a high, very quality aspect of a teachers, and also the passion that goes with them. And I've attended those events in the past. And, you know, what a pleasure it is to see how dedicated these people are. You're very fortunate.
I know that. We are.
We definitely realize that.
We appreciate all your preparation and everything. You've helped us wear the portals. It was great to see you today. Good luck. Congratulations with everything.
Thank you.
And I don't mean that in an ominous way.
He's been doing a good job. He's been doing a good job.
Yeah, no doubt. Thank you very much for being here today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn so that we can go into closed session.
Does that move?
Second.
Second.
Favor.